I'd like to call this meeting to order. I want to be joint planning committee board. Please rise for applause, please.
................................................... Public votes for this meeting, there was a motion to move the meetings act has been given by the board in the following manner. Hostile on the board and the harbor clerk's office and email retrospect and harbor post. Joyce, we'll have you back. Roll call, please.
Thank you, one minute, I'm trying to get this, we had this all up and running.
Is it recording?
See, test your microphone.
No, we can talk.
Thank you.
One two, one two. We're getting the system. Code of money guys, code of money guys. Yes, man. We don't have any.
It's on?
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not showing.
One two, yes, it's working.
Recording?
I'll go back out to the left. Okay, recording. Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Alkali?
Here.
Ms. Lucian is not. Mr. Buckhahn?
Here.
Mr. Vannella?
Here.
Ms. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Roseau?
Here.
Mr. Elias?
Here.
Mr. Ladensdahl?
Here.
Ms. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Musole, is that, is that out? Mr. Rowan?
Here.
And Mr. Bach?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like approval of the minutes from April 26, 20, 23 meeting. Do we have any corrections or additions to it? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion by Mr. Vannella, second by Mr. Buckhahn. All business.
What is it?
All favor?
Hi.
Thank you. All business, resolution 2310, Dave.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is regarding applicant A D A Reedy O L C property located 705, 707 East Clemmersbridge Road, in our city, partially in our city Commercial running district and R1 residential district. This was a, your voting on the memorialization of the resolution for the preliminary final major site plan, which included use variances and bulk variances with waivers. This is regarding the use of car lots, it's going to be going in, it will be existing on plan. It was with conditions, I won't go over each one of those with the, but the conditions that the board required were set forth in the resolution. So we just need a motion to approve.
Dave, are we ceding any of the orders for this?
Excuse me?
Are we ceding any of the orders for?
No, we don't have to.
Okay, yeah, fine.
Yeah, we have enough to vote for this resolution.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Roseau, second by Mr. Vannella. Roll call?
Mr. Alkali?
Yes.
Mr. Buckhahn?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Roseau?
Yes.
Did anyone, was that who was there?
Yeah.
Correct, nobody else could sit in.
Yeah, I think another one there.
That's five, five eyes.
Next all business is Res. 2311.
Yeah, these, Mr. Chairman, are resolutions that Steve prepared and regarding the recommendation of redevelopment plan for certain blocks and blocks within the borough. Steve, I believe you went over what the intent, I mean, twenty of these resolutions were revised. We approved it and recommending it to town, borough council, this is just the.
Can we buy property, keep these still, or we have to vote?
No, you can, you can do them separately, I'm gonna do it separately.
Why they have the same resolution?
It's, I was gonna.
No, it's a numerical.
Eleven and twelve.
So I would do 2311 first.
Hi. Motion for resolution 2311.
I make a motion, second.
Motion by Mr. Vannella, second by Mr. Roseau.
Mr. Alkali?
Yes.
Mr. Buckhahn?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
And Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Roseau?
Yes.
Was anyone else there, Mr. Ladensdahl, you were there for this?
Yes.
Mr. Ladensdahl?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to resolution, it reads 2311 on the agenda, it's actually 2312. Dave?
Just once again, this is a resolution prepared by Mr. Bach regarding the recommendation of a redevelopment plan for the blocks and blocks set forth within the resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve this sort of resolution?
Make the motion?
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckhahn, second by Mr. Vannella. Joyce, roll call, please.
Mr. Alkali?
Yes.
Mr. Buckhahn?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
Ms. Farmer?
Yes.
And Mr. Roseau?
Yes.
And Mr. Ladensdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, if you want to move up one of the orders up to fellow candidates, like you said, it's a full compliment for the pass of the legislature. There's no B variances at the voting board.
Who is the first?
Um, the first, I believe, is Shannon.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on to new business, application 2302. Dave?
Okay, Counselor, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you.
Come on up. Mr. Brown, what we're going to, what we're going to hear in front of me is any witnesses that you're gonna have, we do a group swearing in, so if any gentlemen or ladies that are gonna be testifying on behalf of the application, our engineer, if you just raise, stand, raise your right hands. Okay, gentlemen, the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate, to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, you, O'Brien, from the law firm, your lawyer, for the applicant O R O 195 Running Me Associates, O L C. This is our application for delivery of final site plan approval and parking variance approval necessary for the development of property at block 1055, block 43, going to pre-along Knight Avenue Street address, 195 Clement Avenue. Properties in S E D special economic zone, also in the Knight Street redevelopment area, both the S E D zone and the newly adopted redevelopment plan permit warehouses and permit use. That's what we're looking for approval for this evening, eighty-four thousand square foot warehouse building with associated loading areas, parking areas, dry aisles, stormwater improvements and other utility improvements. This is not the last vacant lot in the Running Me Corporate Center there along Knight Street, but it's the last vacant property that this applicant will be involved with. So again, delivery and final site plan approval, and the parking variance is because we've determined, and our analysis and experience shows that one hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces will be sufficient for the site, so we're proposing development of one hundred and twenty-seven spaces at this time, which are on our site plans, which we reviewed an additional twenty-eight parking spaces which can be developed in the future if they do turn out to be necessary, and we think that they won't. So we described this, I suppose, as a phasing plan, which technically it is, but it isn't a phasing plan, the second phase never really actually gets developed. So we're gonna ask for approval for the initial twenty-eight spaces with the understanding that they won't develop unless it turns out that we need them.
But you understand you have to put up a performance guarantee for that phase one and two all at the same time, and that phase, that performance guarantee will stay in place until that phase two is either rescinded or built.
Yeah, we, we, we can do that, I think what would happen is within the first year or so, as we got a maintenance guarantee, the applicant would know if those extra spaces were going to be needed or not, and then we would just, we could probably do it by that, to say that we're abandoning the second phase, that we don't need to keep that performance guarantee in place. So I'd like to bring up a member of the applicant, Dave Richards, from the applicant O R O 195 Running Me Associates. David, you've already been sworn, could you just introduce yourself to the board, take your name and affiliation with the applicant?
Good evening, everybody, Mr. Chairman, I'm Lord, good to see you all again. My name is Dave Richards, I am the D in D and P, the D is sitting over there. And we are the original developer of what we call Running Me Corporate Center, it was a project that was started in nineteen eighty-eight. Over the course of the last forty years, we've built the seven buildings that are here now that are existing. We owned and managed the property for all that time, until about two years ago when we sold the park to another ownership entity, but we retain this one lot, and we like to run it as much as we do, and break down, we have great relationships with people all these years, and of course, the market is pretty, pretty good, so there is a reason why we're here to put this building up now. It's, as Mr. O'Brien says, it's an eighty thousand square foot facility, similar in style to what we built before, it's a multi-tenant, it's designed as a multi-tenant facility that can accommodate up to fourteen spaces, fourteen different tenants, however, we're really looking to only put in four tenants, two tenants, we're hoping that the units will go as multiple units together in more than blocks. Our experience over the last forty years in Running Me is that even though all the other buildings were designed with smaller units, we've never really had many small tenants at all, they mostly were ten thousand square feet, fifteen thousand, twenty, so this building really works better for four tenants and twenty thousand feet each. But again, we'll see what we, whatever comes our way when we start marketing the building, we're really hoping not to have fourteen tenants, we don't want to do that, so we're gonna try to be a little bit selective with what we do put in, but you have to design for whatever conditions we come to that.
Also, that would give you flexibility, right, and if you have four tenants, if you have five tenants, if you have two units, if you have three units, it just lets you move tenants around.
Exactly.
Now, throughout the development of, of the park, you've been studying, provided traffic reports, obviously historically in this board, and I suppose in county, have you've installed some, some traffic improvements here in this roadway, is this correct?
Uh, yes, and in fact, we actually built Knight Avenue, when we first took the project on, it ended at the very first building here, which is one fifty bucket, Knight Avenue, we continued it all the way around, purchased some land at the intersection of what was Knight Avenue, what was to be Knight Avenue and Clemmersbridge Road, installed a traffic light here, built the, built the road all the way out to Clemmersbridge Road to make the property flow from one end of Running Me to the other. That was always contemplated, by the way, when the original tract of land was purchased, there was a sliver of land that was coming out here that was part of the tract of purchase. We couldn't put the roadway here because over time, what thing's taken over and grown in that spot, so we had to abandon it, we had to find another alternate way out of Clemmersbridge Road. To answer your question, yes.
We, you asked Traffic Traffic Associates to do a short traffic study for purposes of this application, they found that those improvements are still sufficient and that still satisfactory. So occupancy rates, vacancy rates for this type of development, is, is your experience are still, occupancy rates are, are still high and vacancy rates are still low?
Uh, yes, that's, that's our hope, anyway. When we built the last building back in two thousand and five, the one sixty-five Knight Avenue building, by the time we actually got the shell physically up, we had the building basically three weeks. Once there's some activity on site, and a broker can actually show a prospective tenant that you're three to six months away from completion, that's when you start getting market activity. At this point, it's really just a raw tract of land, and it's not gonna attract anybody yet, they want to see something substantial to put in there. So we're hoping the market holds till that time, and we suspect it will.
In terms of operations, these buildings can sometimes be twenty-four hours, probably very, very low activity rates overnight.
Yeah, usually at night, depending again on, on the tendency, they're usually more normal working hours. Originally, this building was occupied by Airborne, which became D H L, which ultimately went out of business, but when Airborne was there, yes, that was a twenty-four seven operation, that's the nature of their business, for the most part, most of the tenants operate during normal business hours. I can't tell you what's gonna be here, but my guess is it'll follow soon.
And so we can't tell the board numbers of employees yet, even though we should inform you?
No, not, we can't nail that down, no, but we're, we're looking for sixty, seventy employees, somewhere in that neighborhood, that's what our brokers tell us we can expect with four twenty thousand foot tenants.
And in terms of trash and recyclable collection, that's your typical business line, is that tenant responsibility?
Yes, the way the leases are structured, your tenants pay for their own, they, they hire their own carding companies, and they pay for their own carding individually. Many times, a bunch of tenants will get together using the same carding outfit, which makes sense, of course. Again, that's not really part of our control, that's not how our business model works.
Okay, and in terms of signage, again, you don't know who's gonna be in there, so you don't know what they're specific. Signage needs are gonna be what we've discussed, and you recognize that if the signage that's ultimately proposed doesn't comply with the ordinance, we have to come back to the board and ask for variance.
Correct. What we normally propose, what we normally put on is a monument sign for each building listing, it's a small sign, so they're out there now, we just saw them hang on there. But it has, it just lists the individual tenants, and it says Running Me Corporate Center, the address, and the names of the tenants are in there, and then as a tenant moves in, they normally put some kind of markings on the building. We have strict regulations in our lease to tell them what they can and can't do, but again, we'll defer to the tenant, what your ordinance is, and we'll make sure we enforce that. We don't want any kind of signs, we don't want any flashy something there. Yeah.
We'll send them all your way. Looking, do we look any of the signs, I don't know, really?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, no, we don't really, so no any of the signs I've got, but anyway, we'll comply with the ordinance.
And questions for Mr. Richards?
I did have one, the only concern I have, I think is, and I hate to bring this up, is I understand you might want to have more parking spaces depending on the tenants, if you don't put it in, and rules change down the road, does it force you to come back in here and try to expand the parking lot, wouldn't it be better to finish it so that you have it, that's only, I mean, I know there's always a cost, but at the same time, we don't know the future, and, but we know the future, that the rules are always changing, we do know that.
If you part of that answer, we have Mr. Shrock, Andrew Brown here from Shrockshire, and I think he'll confirm this with what we've seen in warehouse applications, and as he owns a lot of them, and some of them are, are a lot, a lot bigger than this one, but international traffic institute, traffic engineers data shows that demand for warehouses with automation has actually reduced significantly from when those ordinances were written, and you just don't need the number of parking spaces that comes to you, because you have fewer employees, frankly, but you will always have that piece of space, right, you'll either fill parking on it, or you, if you turn something else on, we have to come back before the board.
Right, if we determine at this point that we don't need this space, I'd rather leave green.
So it'll be just natural?
It'll be natural, it'll be green, and then if in fact we do need it, and then we abandon it, and we decide that fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, we have to come back and get approval for more parking spaces there, that'll be at our peril, and we had, had to do that for this building, the ones.
I remember when you came in for that one.
Right, we had the parking spaces, we came back, we applied for them, and we granted them.
How could they have that place available, frankly?
Yeah, but it's, it's not really that cost, it's just about, you know, why disturb it, you know, after.
Where's the other space, is that to the right of the building, is that what you're talking about?
It's actually right in front of it.
Right in front.
The parking for the building is, and I'm sure the, our engineer, Mr. Brown, will testify, is most of the parking for the building will be up front, and there'll be some parking in the loading areas on one side, this little triangular area here is, is what we call this future parking, and there's about thirty spaces, twenty-seven spaces there, and so this is the area that we would try not to build right now unless we find that we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brown? Scott, you've been sworn already, would you please report the benefit of your education qualifications, and maybe you could give testimony to it.
My name's Scott Brown from Ransom Consulting, I'm the office manager of the Glassboro office, graduate of Drexel University, got my engineering license in nineteen ninety-four, survey and license in nineteen ninety-nine, had a family company called Accutube, I ended up with two thousand and seven, I worked with Gosi Engineering, was there for thirteen years, joined Ransom in twenty twenty, while they bought, you're still there, engineering survey.
See if you're qualified.
So, Mr. Brown, using whichever one of those exhibits you'd like, if we could just identify it, and if you could just reorient the board to the extent they may not be familiar with the site and the surroundings, just let me know which one of those you're gonna use.
Let's see. I guess this is probably easier to see.
Okay, so we have an aerial rendering of the site plan overall, which the lady wants to take from the angle.
So, this is the site, it's in yellow, it's probably a little difficult to see from where you are, but the site goes around and actually has a little figure that goes all the way up the front through, so it's kind of a goofy shaped lot. Now, this is, this sits right at the corner of Knight Avenue, and we're about, about a head mile down from Black Horse Pike, and about a quarter mile from Clemmersbridge Road. The site has a, it has a basin on it, and this basin is actually for the entire industrial park, so that's kind of shaped like, comes around like this, kind of dog like that.
And there's a drainage easement that provides for the use to make it sound that good.
Right, so as far as where we are in the world, okay, so these warehouses here, we have Garda, it's occupied, this one, Road Rooter, Elwood, Interstate Battery is in here, Auto Plus True Breed is this one, this is Summit Drilling, Sintas, we also have down here, this is Runson House, this is, this is Kitty Academy.
Mr. Brown, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick, I'm gonna ask you to move the one tripod back, so you can stand on the side of the tripod this hand, the day as it can't see, so that way you can stand closer to the side.
Stand there for you.
There you go, now we have this.
Sorry about that, I'm not wearing a pair of glasses. Okay, so this is the Public Works Building, so we're here, this is Mr. Softy, this area, and I know you got that song in your head now, but you can't get rid of that. So that's, that's basically where we are in the world. As far as existing conditions, there's several things that are going on here, simply because this, this site has a lot of easements running through it. First thing is, there's a stream that runs right through here, it's called Beaver Brook, that is a flood hazard area associated with it. The stream accroshment was done by Anders Engineering back in nineteen eighty-nine, and that was when they, they were doing this basin, okay? So the string accroshment that runs along the edge of the stream. We had also done method five study for D E P, and we replotted the, the stream accroshment lines of nineteen eighty-nine, it had the adjustment to a different elevation system. Once we did that, sent everything in the D E P, D E P sent us back a letter and said, you're not in the flood hazard area, so we don't need any permits for that, so we're okay with that. There's also wetlands that runs along the edge, along the edge of the basin, we had that delineated, we also sent that to the D E P, we got a letter in interpretation back from them, showed a buffer around the, around the wetlands here, there's also wetlands in the basin, but there's no buffer for them, and we are not disturbing that at all, now.
So we don't, we don't need D E P?
We don't, now, I know one of those site plans, when we did the original site plan, it's good enough, we show a buffer averaging on there, we changed that, we redid the grading, so we don't need that buffer averaging now, but it is shown on the site plan, now, because we don't have time to, to recent the plans, so I just wanna, wanna make a note of that. So we do not need a permit from the D E P.
The wooded areas to the, where they're obviously will remain.
Yes, now, there's, when the original wetlands was done back in the eighties, around the basin, they put a conservation easement around that, so the conservation easement actually follows around out where this woods line is, so we can't do anything up here, you know, between flood hazard area, the wetlands, the conservation area, this woods is gonna stay here forever today. Around the basin, there is a basin maintenance, excuse me, so that's how you can get on, you know, anybody can get in here and actually clean it up and do some, do some maintenance to it, so there's that piece of. Also, C C M U A sewer line that runs just to the south of the basin, and actually goes through the basin and over towards the end of the Public Works Building, there's easement associated with that. To the south of that, there's also a visible sewer, which, which runs through that, it takes a bend and goes out towards Runson House, so it's that sewer line. There's also storm lines, because they, they all come from around the other buildings, there's one that comes through the back, behind these two, it goes out into the basin, there's one that comes from across the street over here, and actually runs across the front of the site, there's another one from right at the corner of Knight Avenue, which ties in to the one I just mentioned, and there's one from the Runson House in the back, which is the basin, and there's an outlet structure, and that ties into that also. So we have quite a few easements, and besides that, last but not least, if you see this cleared area right here, that's where gas, there's two gas lines up here, there's a Southern Ohio line, and there's also Columbia line, that's only partly on the property in this corner. So with all that being said, there's, there's quite a few easements, and, you know, with some restrictions, you know.
Before we move to the site design, I know that you received a copy of it, years ago, you sent a notice to the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, you never heard anything from them, nowadays, they'll send comment letters, they'll sort of request their recommendations, and some of them are obvious, you know, no, no lighting, still not the turnpike, another one is, is that they ask for a seven foot high chain link fence along the edge of the turn, the turnpike property, for reasons that Scott has just discussed, that this property is inaccessible from the turnpike, we're going to politely decline to do that, but wanted to bring it to your attention, because a seven foot chain link fence would require variance, and I'm not sure how we can deal with it here, because it's our intention again to say that we don't believe we need it, because our property is just not accessible from the turnpike, and frankly, I don't believe they have the authority, the forces to do it.
So say that one more time, what you're declining exactly?
The New Jersey Turnpike Authority, the comment letter, we had a chance to see if there's, we need a laundry list of, you know, don't, don't have stormwater, grain on our roadway, don't have lights filling up our roadway, all obvious, now, they also asked for a seven foot high chain link fence along the property, we don't think we need that, or decline, doesn't want to do it, so we're going to politely decline to the turnpike to do it. And you're gonna get their acceptance of that? I, I believe so, but I raised it, because we would like to, we'd like you to know about it. But it's, but it's an outside agency that? It's not, they don't have jurisdiction over our project, they're just a buddy property. They don't have jurisdiction? We don't have, we don't have access to the turnpike, it's not like a D O T access easement, they, and their letter, request, their letter says they request it, they recommend it. Work is told us that it's an outside agency unless.
Work is told us that it's an outside agency unless you and I can, unless it's proved otherwise. Because we usually get their.
The turnpike?
Yeah. I, I don't want to just say that, but it's not necessary. Because there's a lot of interest along the turnpike discussion, that area right now. So I, I, I'm unsure.
Why don't you just add the, just in case you needed it, we could give you approval this evening?
That would be preferable. If, if you're comfortable with the seven foot chain link fence along the turnpike property, maybe not.
If required.
I don't, I don't believe it would comply with the orders.
Yeah, I, I am unsure. So it's an outside agency approval. I think that would be something we would have to reconcile with your approval. I just want to leave it in there. If it's, if it's obvious that it's not applicable, then, then no harm in that.
Well, Steve, what would you propose? That we entertain a seven foot, a variance from our ordinance? Six foot, seven foot?
I would just recognize that, get the variance compared to government variance right now. Just to have it so you don't have to come back. And then if it's not applicable and the turnpike authority is not an outside agency that has any jurisdiction, then no harm in that.
That wouldn't be a devariance.
No, 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 no.
Sounds like they would be in favor of that. So why don't we, why don't we entertain that here in summation?
Fair enough. So in terms, Mr. Brown, sorry for the interruption, of site design itself, you have here a rendered copy of the site plan itself. Can you forward the board to the, the site design?
Sure. So this here is the tent car, that's the building. We have this divided up in fourteen minutes or so. As Mr. Richard had said, this is probably the height of the case. You know, most of the tenants, you know, just from the other types of warehouses out here, you know, are usually going to buy three to four pieces, rent three or four pieces. So we might have realistically four tenants in the building. So, and in that, this is the loading area. And we're showing fourteen separate loading docks. How could I believe that? You're probably going to be looking at anywhere from four, possibly eight, depending on the tenant. So this, this area, you know, could change certainly depending upon who the tenants are going to be. We have trash enclosures right now. We have three trash enclosures. Again, that could change depending on the, on the tenants that are in there. Probably be sufficient for them, but we might have to add, you know, a fourth one if there's four tenants. Now, access is actually through an easement. This is an existing drive that's for this warehouse building. We have access at a utility easement where there's a sewer line that runs through there. We're going to be using that access. And this will be the main access back to the loading area. So we want to keep the trucks actually just staying in this route and come back out this way. Now, we did check returning radiuses and everything to be able to go around the, the technical fire truck. We should have any problems with a eighty-sixty-two truck. And, you know, one of you has an aerocap ladder of the fire truck. So that also, that's like a thirty-seven foot long truck. Got about forty-five foot longer use. So we had checked this, so we shouldn't have a problem with any trucks going in this direction. If they happen to go that way. But we want to try to keep the traffic over here for the loading area. With parking, we've been putting parking along existing drive. And the surround parking is going to be around the building. There's parking that's over here, as Mr. Richard mentioned. This is the future parking area that he was talking about. We had done some calculations for the amount of parking based on the area of the warehouse and the area of the office space. Usually office space accounts fifteen percent of the total area. So that's what we figured to do in calculations. With those calculations, we came up with one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces. So besides having a typo here, if they actually set a twenty parking, there's fourteen. We would have to add six more, but that's written out probably. That's basically put another six parking spaces. So if we went at one hundred and twenty-seven around here, if we have eighty employees, so total, probably won't even be that many. So, but we would have a total of one hundred and twenty-seven around the building. And then the other twenty-eight, we would have in phase two. So as we said, we would prefer to keep this open because we have to take all these trees out. So it's, it's better to leave this here for now. So if we do it as a second phase on these plants, which is already designed for that. So we already had it designed for the whole thing. We can just take this out basically, if we get the variance on parking now and keep that in there. We can build that at another time. Shouldn't have to go back to the board.
Can I ask you a question? Is, is the future parking, and maybe Mr. Richards might want to weigh in here. Is that future parking just to address the variant situation in terms of the, the ordinance? Or is it something that's operationally needed or even considered?
Well, we had, we had added this in there simply to get up to one fifty-one.
Right, that should come up. That's my question. I'm, I'm just, is, if, if it's, we're going to be looking at a parking variance. We're going to hear, hear from Mr. Ferranda in terms of what the I T E standards, industry standards for parking for warehouse spaces. We already heard from Mr. Richards that most likely eighty employees, if you use our ordinance requirements for the number of employees, it's less than what's contemplated for the square footage. And also that's a large area right on the end of a curve with steep grades and also adjacent to another use in the commercial zone, but it's a residential use in the commercial zone. Is it? Is it? Do you need that for real estate purposes to have that additional parking?
Well, first of all, we, we put the parking there because we need to comply with the ordinance.
Right.
So take that aside, it is an unknown. I mean, we don't really know exactly what's going to occupy this building. So there is a chance that there could be, you know, there could be parking spaces put in there depending on how this works out. This is, in that total manufacturing building, there are usually more employees there. So we might, I, I.
Okay, so you, you want to reserve that? Okay.
So Steve, are you trying to get away? You don't want to have the parking there because you think of the other use next door? Is that what you were just implying?
If, if it's not necessary and if, if the app was only adding those parking spaces, I'm sure we're going to hear testimony.
Most engineers like more parking spaces, but less.
Well, I, based on the, the standards for warehousing that we're saving, we're going to get from the traffic engineer, it may not be necessary to have too many spaces.
He's also reserved, right?
But if you want to reserve, that's a moot point and we move on.
I mean, I hate to give this to you, but, I mean, we could want over here, the loading area with parking spaces and just do away with this entirely. I know you don't want to see that, but I mean, that's, that's.
Well, no, I would not be against it.
If they need, if, if, if there are twenty, one hundred and twenty-seven proposed, why does the board entertain a variance to permit one twenty-seven? If they need it in the future. They, they, they have extra land, they would just come, they would just come back before us instead of putting it in phases. I mean, would that be simpler or?
I, I think this, and you know, I'm sorry. So I think it may be simpler here that you wouldn't even have to phase it. If you're building the paving, the parking spaces in the rear or one, you could ghost them as, as, well, call them ghost spaces. And they could be stripped in the future as necessary. But your paving is already done, your, your drainage is already done and you wouldn't even have to do a phase to it.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't even have an outside bond sitting there. You wouldn't even have to.
Let's hear it from Scott.
I have to defer to my engineer. He's going to yell at me for suggesting it because it doesn't, it's tricky now. But it doesn't mean that every single one of these spaces is ever going to be used. A few of them, but I'll, I'll let you, you know.
Well, first, the problem is we don't know where these loading docks are going to be. If there's loading docks here and loading docks on the end, I think there's plenty of room in there to do that. I mean, we could put parallel parking spaces in there also.
We can add the fourth tip.
Which would, you know, gives us a little more room. As long as we can, or we can pull the trucks out.
Do you have an opportunity to double load the eastern drive on? Adjacent to the basin?
Maybe put them over here?
Yeah. Again, that, it's your application. I'm just saying, I hate to see it go through because it's going to be a lot of grading and a lot of true rule.
Well, again, it sounds, we're hoping not to do this. And I can, I can speak to Mr. P over there from B and P and find out what his thoughts are. I just threw that out there. But we have done this in the other buildings we've owned where we, where we had less of a courtyard, a truck yard than this. This is what, one hundred and twenty-five feet?
One hundred and fifteen.
One hundred and fifteen. So you could certainly parallel park a bunch of cars there. Yeah, one hundred and five. I mean, the first, the first building we built was eighty-four feet. What trucks are there now? Are you okay with that? I think we, we, we could look at that.
So I, I'm just trying to figure out. So you could do the parallel parking in the rear, hitting the twenty-six spaces?
If they need it.
If they need it, if they need it. If it doesn't work for you, it's your application, it's your land. You do whatever you think is appropriate. I just know that we're, there are some concerns about the great difference there removing all those trees and also getting that adjacent residential using. That's all we're just trying to save. If you were only doing this for the purpose of trying to get the variance less and, and we hear the testimony that supports that you don't need that many parking spaces, that's all.
Why don't we hear that testimony?
And then maybe we can come back to that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, sorry to interrupt your, your testimony here in train of thought.
Well, if we're allowed to parallel park some cars back here, maybe we eliminate these spaces and just hang on to these.
I mean, so for sure.
That would still give you two phases, wouldn't it?
It would still give us two phases.
You're going to stay with two phases.
And, and then, and maybe then you could have some retention of existing larger trees between the residential use next door. Runson House. And Mr. Brown, maybe you can put this out to Mr. Richards so he knows exactly what we're talking about. You probably know on the top of your head exactly how far it runs in house.
Yeah, it's about. I, I remember.
That, that sounds like, yeah, that's what. Right, yeah. So right now you're taking pretty close all the way to the exit.
Well, certainly we could pull out these.
I mean, one, one issue we have is coming back for a second one is, of course, stormwater. I don't know.
We're not indicating that you would have to come back at all. We're like trying to do it right now. So if, if that works for you, if that works for you with the, the parallel parking and the retention of the front part as a phase two, I think, I think that's, that is something.
If you have the parallel parking in the rear, if you would allow that, the odds of us coming for needing the front spaces, you know.
I'm fine with both of those. That's okay, board. I just wanted to try to get a feel for what was that.
So your goal is trying to maintain some of the trees between the Runson House and this property. They don't need the parking.
And I'm sure we're going to hear testimony and I'm sorry to hijack your being, but there is no requirement for a buffer between the S E Ds, which relies on a commercial buffering from a S E Ds or commercial property to another commercial zone. It's by zone, not by use, by zone. So there is no buffering that's required by our ordinance. So if we can just see if we can resolve the parking and try to get some sort of separation, I think that's the best of both worlds that we're waiting for. And there's nothing that we can force GAFC to do. That's why I was asking, because I see it's like a.
I just one question, so I understand it as well. If we go for this two-phase project where we have the, just these as a second phase, do we have to come back to the plan?
No.
We just do it by letter if we need to.
You would, you would be vested in that approval. You would have to unfortunately, in order to keep the vesting, you would have to do the performance guarantee. And then you, to. It is a tourist, the state, the state statute has different reasons. But that way you would never have to come back and your, your approval for that would never expire. And then if you decide when you're all leased up, oh, we're not going to do this. So as Mr. O'Brien said, you could then withdraw and rescind your rights of that and get your performance guarantees back.
I understand. I have one more question for, for Scott. This pond that you have here, is that going to be affected or is that still after that? Or is this just?
Yeah, this, this is. So, I mean, we could probably just leave this portion of it.
Okay, so that, so all that.
You need to work on the configuration. You have a little bit of opportunity to kind of push it away from that adjacent property line. So I'll leave that, we'll work that out. And someone just called my name.
Dave, couldn't you, I'm just asking. So in lieu of that, two years from now, you said, hey, you know what? We only need ten, twelve spots. You don't have to go with phase two. You could, couldn't he just go in the back there?
Yeah. We're going to have both of them.
So that way you're not obligated to, you know, complete that or put money into it where you don't need it.
Exactly.
The only thing you would have to do is do the performance guarantee.
Right.
So that.
Yeah, until it comes off.
And the good thing is performance guarantee or the current statute is not nearly as onerous as it was before. So they only have to do site stabilization and, and site stabilization, which will only probably be a five thousand dollar guarantee versus all the site improvements. And it's all five. So it makes it much more reasonable work though when I do that.
And more realistic, he, he might not even come before us again anyway.
He wouldn't have, he would never have to come back.
Then that's a.
He can, and I'm looking at the two attorneys. He can rescind his entitlement in advance in his phase two approval by letter. So there's no reason he would ever have to come back. We're going to get this all accommodated.
So he, he's not going to need a variance there? You're going to?
A parking variance. Only a parking variance.
To permit phasing? That's why I'm.
So we're, we're, the variance would allow us to install one hundred and forty, twenty-seven parking spaces with a second phase, which would be the twenty-eight additional required spaces.
For a total of one fifty-five?
For a total of one fifty-five. And those additional bank spaces or ghost spaces, which I would like to call them, would be either by way of parallel parking across the back of the property, which we have to first preference. And then Scott, what, can you specify how many additional we need up there on the phase two? Just so we have some clarity.
We have eighteen right here.
So we, we would have eighteen if this phase two became necessary.
There's, there's ten right here that we could take out.
So one twenty-seven phase one and twenty-eight on phase two.
Up to twenty-eight. But in the same language, just leave it.
So the parking, the parking variance is not to build all right now.
Right.
So they will be entitled to build those, those twenty-eight parking spaces. Either a combination of up to eighteen parking spaces from the front or up to, I think the number was, Scott, what you asked me. those, those 28 parking spaces by either a combination of up to 18 parking spaces from the front or up to, I think the number was, Scott, what you asked me, 20?
Why, why not 28?
Or, or parallel parking spaces to the. Gives a lot of flexibility.
So Scott, real quick, a couple of things in Mr. Box's letter. Steve had asked to, us to install, retain all along Ninth Avenue, which I've disagreed to do, correct?
Good for guardrail.
A guardrail. Sorry, I was taking off the guardrail.
Yes, over here. There's a gradient down. The question is, how much of the guardrail do we need? Just in this area?
So, and we're just important. So obviously, there's a good grade difference going around the curve of Ninth Avenue. When it was vacant, it was not as much a concern. There is trees and everything else. But along the property frontage as required by NJDOT/ASHDO standards, I'll look it up real quick after we talk. So NJDOT refers to ASHTO, and it's all based on street of the road, the slope, and how much gap between the edge of pavement and before the slope starts. So whatever the guardrail recommendations, the guidelines of NJDOT/ASHDO is what we would.
So there'll be a guardrail in front of the sidewalk?
It may be behind.
Behind the sidewalk. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter as long as it's on the opposite.
We have had a few accidents on that corner.
Where is that on the review letters?
It's not. It's not, sorry.
Is this going to be a condition?
This is going to be a condition. Guardrail along Ninth Avenue frontage as required by NJDOT/ASHDO.
Guardrail along, is that what, front guard?
Along, yeah, against Ninth Avenue frontage. For NJDOT.
Okay.
Slash ASHTO.
Ash.
A-A-S-H-T-O. Am I correct, Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, you're putting sidewalk along there? Am I correct?
Yes.
You're doing it along your entire frontage, all the way down to the point?
No, there's sidewalk here.
Existing sidewalks, but they would exist. At the end of the day, there'll be sidewalk along your entire frontage.
Yes, a little way up to Clemish Bridge.
But along your frontage, your property, that's all we.
Yes, that's the portion.
You're going to connect across the front of his and come up ninth towards Clemish Bridge?
Yeah, so, yeah, just going to extend it.
One side?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here, Mr. Brown.
Sure.
I have a couple of other things in Steve's letter. Access driveway strike we've agreed to install, we'll put that turning template that you just discussed on the site plans. It might be easier.
Go ahead.
Because I know, Mr. Brown, I had an opportunity to discuss things. Is there anything in our review of May 17th that you cannot accommodate?
No, the only thing that we had left without was the sanitary sewer.
Correct. Sanitary sewer, and I was supposed to, the director of public works, sanitary sewer, A U convenience, whatever it is, it doesn't have to be an outside lateral for maintenance. All maintenance will be the responsibility of the applicant. I did have an opportunity to look some through some of your responses. You will provide all the utility information on the site that is not only readily available, but you invest your knowledge of what is on the site.
Well, we have, we have
Pretty good idea.
Information or on the floor, we know the sanitary sewer runs there. As far as the water line and the outer street, I don't know.
Can you get that from New Jersey Market Water and put that on?
I will try. I have a lot of difficulty doing things these days because I'm open, you know, I already do a lot of open. They just don't want to give it to you.
If you write evidence that you've done your best effort to get the information, that'll be satisfied.
So another candidate applicants want to shop apply with the review comments.
Of May 17?
Of, of, of May 17, and we'll revise the site plans accordingly.
So the good thing, Dave, I have no additional comments.
I think we've exhausted Mr. Brown enough. If he has any other questions, we're going to ask Mr. Brian to talk about site traffic. Andrew, you have this board. Give the board the benefit of your education qualifications, if David gave you testimony.
I've appeared before this board before. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm also PTOA, traffic operations engineer, certification, higher certification in the traffic field. Graduated Drex of the university.
I recall. Just your last name.
Faranda, F-E-R-A-N-D-A.
With Trachtar?
With Trachtar, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Fran, if you could describe the limited traffic, I guess it was traffic letter, traffic report that you prepared for this application.
Traffic report was prepared by our office. To do so, we look at the roadway conditions. We looked at some roadway volumes on Ninth Ave. Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission provides some volumes along Ninth Ave. We found that the AM volumes are roughly 200 trips in each direction. In the PM, it's roughly 200 trips in each direction. That in a sense is not capacity for the road. There's plenty of capacity on the road. Daily trips, there's between 4,500 and 5,000 trips. That's a whole day, not the peak hour. Peak hours being the AM highest hour during morning commute. PM is during the afternoon commute. Then you have the daily traffic that travels on the road all day. Ninth Ave connects to Black Horse Pike and Clemish Bridge Road. There's signals on either side so that traffic can be accommodated. For the new site, I find traffic signals on either side. This is obviously a development that fits right in with neighboring warehouses and industrial use. The site, we project traffic, there aren't tenants yet for the building as they described before. There's 14 units showing up planned. There may be four tenants in the building. We project traffic based on Institute of Transportation Engineers, the Bible for Traffic Engineering. They collect data for many different uses and many different sizes. They compile that data. And they allow us then to project traffic for different sized uses based on the size of the building. We project during the AM peak hour, there would be 59 trips. That would be 52 in, seven out. In the afternoon, peak hour, it's computer hour. Traffic will be leaving the sites typically between 4:00 and 6:00. The peak PM would be 52, seven in and 45 out. So roughly you're looking at 50 to 60, and that's consistent with the employees. They, 50 to 70 or 50 to 80 employees. Again, there can be trips outside the peak hour, but working at the highest peak hour when the bell rings at 5:00 and everybody's out. You'll get your peak hour during that timeframe to leave at 4:45 to 8:5, 35, 45. And again, the traffic trip generation is consistent with the consistent with the number of employees on site. Now, for consistency, then we're looking at the parking on site. We're talking about 127 parking spaces being provided. Again, there's, the tenants aren't known, so they're trying to accommodate based on their knowledge of the area. And they have good experience. They know the area well. Heard earlier testimony, their history with this area. They are providing 155 parking spaces to meet your requirements. I don't know if it's really a variance if they're providing, they're showing all the parking spaces.
They're not going to build it right now.
But they may not build it, correct. But it's shown as if it could be built later on, so, and they have the ability to put the parking spaces.
If we have the variance now.
It's always better to get.
If we have the variance now, they can abandon?
Yeah. If we don't have the variance, they have to at some point build.
Correct. That's why we want the variance for the 127 place.
And I understand that. And I'm here to, again, go back to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is important. There's the requirement, which tells you how many parking spaces you want on site to accommodate traffic for the tenants that would be on site. But there's also a thing called demand. That's the use of the parking spaces. We typically want the requirement to be more than the demand. If the requirement were less than the demand, then you'd have, you know, three employees would have to fill parking spaces. That's not the requirement. Requirements typically above the demand. The Institute of Transportation Engineers actually has counts at different facilities, warehouses such as this, where they get the demand and they work it down to a demand rate. For a building like this, the demand rate would be 0.65 spaces per thousand square feet. And based on 80,400 square feet, that would be about 53, 54 parking spaces. And again, that number keeps coming back. That's the peak trip for the site. That's also the number of employees they're projecting in that 50 range. Not all employees will be part of the site. Some of these will be contractors, power contractors. So it's all consistent. It all makes sense. And it all says that the demand can be met. The 128 spaces that they're providing, or 127 spaces, these 28 spaces have necessarily been needed. But again, because they are tenants, this might be part of their marketing, making sure that they have what the tenants would be looking for. And by providing them, they're showing what could be done to meet your requirement. But based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, based on the testimony tonight, that they can provide other spaces in other locations. Almost doesn't make sense to take down trees and work in an area here when that demand would be there for the spaces. But again, if a variance is required and that could be given, that sounds like the appropriate way to go.
So two key points from your testimony, Andrew. First, board can be comfortable that the existing roadways can handle the traffic adequately from the site?
Yes, again, 50 trips from the site, 50 to 60 trips would use the existing driveway, shared driveway of the site. So no new access, there's no new driveway, there'd be the existing driveway. And that will then allow them to use Ninth Ave either direction, 50 trips, halfway this way, half, maybe some more going out to Black Horse Pike. Trips will be distributed and then they go to the traffic signals where they would have the ability to use the signal to get out on roads.
And second point, the ITP science or engineering, if you will, supports this variance based on its analysis of similarities.
Correct. The demand will be met by the 127 spaces, certainly by the 155 if they need to construct those. But again, with good confidence, the 127 spaces are met. But again, this is not an inexperienced user in this area. They know the area. They know their building. They know what their tenants will be.
Any questions for Mr. Fran?
What is the 4,500 number you gave, Andrew, for daily, you said?
Oh, the daily trips. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission does counts on the roadways. They do counts every hour. They put road tubes out there. I found their gathering data every hour, and they find where the peak hours are. That's how I gave you the PKM, peak hour, and the PM.
I understand that.
The daily trips would be the traffic that's going on the road every hour, 24 hours. So.
4,500.
4,500.
Wow.
Not from this site?
Not from this site.
People using the road from, from Black Horse Pike coming to Clemish Bridge.
Correct, yes. Which is roughly 2,000 in each direction for a full day.
That's 2,000 in each direction.
I understand that.
That's not per hour. That's, that's a whole day. And during the nighttime when they're not looking, they're using that road.
I think the road would be easily be able to handle it. You know, DHL, as Mr. Richards said, was there at one time. A lot more traffic then. And I've, I've never noticed any traffic problems, you know, when DHL was there. And even when United Rental was in that building. It's never been any traffic problems back in there.
It seems like a big number, but over 24 hours.
Oh, it's not. It's just astonishing to us to hear that sometimes, you know, for a small town.
It might be astonishing to you that it's 10,000, 15,000 on Black Horse Pike during the day. The numbers are those as young as you get to the large roadways.
Do you think, one quick question, that the lights might be adjusted at some point on the either side, on the Pike or the Clemish Bridge for like the morning time of people coming in or the afternoon when they're leaving?
If that were done, it wouldn't be based on this site. The traffic just wouldn't generate enough to have that change made. That would be done by the DOT or by the county with any of their signal, change of roadway improvements.
Okay, thank you.
And I can say that Mr. Fran's office was involved with the Black Horse Pike Ninth Avenue traffic signal in our unsuccessful petition?
They were unsuccessful with the Black Horse Pike and Clemish Bridge too.
So the boroughs already tried to get adjustments?
Yes.
And the DOT said, no, the green time stays on the Black Horse Pike. That's it.
We all shake our heads at the DOT sometimes. They want to keep the green time on.
It affects so many other towns, you know. Clemish Bridge is long. Black Horse Pike is even longer, so I understand. But still, got to look out for running. Thank you.
So we have an direct testimony for you, Mr. Joe. I guess a couple of housekeeping matters. This is a redevelopment area, as you know. We will be requesting to be designated as a redevelopment. The redevelopment plan, sorry, the redevelopment plan allows us to proceed with this application before we're back under the local zoning ordinance, which we've done. I would note for the board that there are a couple of provisions in the plan which I believe we don't comply with, and one of them is parking in the front yard area. Another is to have a board fence or a solid fence around the entire site as part of the landscape buffer. And we just point that out for the board. I'm not sure if it should be treated as a waiver because it's a big one that we gave to the application.
So you would not have to appear before the board, I believe, under your approval, which you're going for, if you're successful with seeing the, the board. Well, redevelopment entity was mayor and council. We have to revisit those requirements on this site. And the plan for this specific parcel, we have two redevelopment plans we've got through going. This site, the requirement for not allowing parking in the front yard and the requirement for the fence perimeter for this parcel. The redevelopment plan would, would be most likely recommended to be amended by redevelopment entity, mayor and council. It would go back here for consistency, and then go back for an amendment by full mayor and council.
But they would have to be, they would have to appear.
Yet you would not be going through that process.
Just wanted to point you out.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have again, in your direct testimony. Thanks very much.
And board, it appears that there's no other fault variances that the, the, all the minimum lot frontages, reared setbacks, et cetera, that are complying with that.
And it's noted in our review, waivers for completeness, for completeness only, the applicants perhaps are very indicated that they will provide anything that is waiver for completeness only. Anything that is waiver recommended, the applicant would not have to provide. And that's put by recommendations that are May 17th revealed.
So the, so the board's clear on this? The, the ones that you've designated waiver recommended, they can act on by a waiver for completeness only, they still have to complete?
Correct. And that's noted right in the.
Steve, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Dave, do you have anything else? Okay, this time I'm, anyone question for the board?
Mr. Brown, Steve are professionals. Want to know how we can make sure there's a call out in the resolution report for the annual maintenance report for stormwater? As everybody knows, that's coming forward. But on the document of the stormwater report, 398, is the annual maintenance report for here, and it needs to be turned over to the municipality. That's the responsibility of the applicant. We want to make sure that's.
We can make that a condition.
Condition. Condition.
So that's a condition, that applicant? Where successors and interests?
And what we're just highlighting is, it's already a material requirement, it's already in their stormwater maintenance plan. The stormwater maintenance plan will have to be recorded at the register with the county clerk's office, but if it's in the resolution, when our zoning officer and everybody else looks at it, it will just break into the forefront instead of a big, way down in minutia, it's right there as one of the conditions, and I think Mr. Wilson is absolutely correct, his responsibility as a stormwater coordinator is to make sure he gets those reports.
And how are they, they have to be done annually?
Annually. And the requirements are already outlined in the application.
File annual stormwater management reports? Okay. Five. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public, to speak on this now and this now only. I want to take a motion.
I'll make that motion to close the public portion.
Motion by Mr. Longstein, seconded by Mr. Brown. Joyce, Paul Paul. I'm, I'm sorry, make a motion, sorry. Get it myself.
Okay, so, yeah, this is an application for premises located at 195 Ninth Avenue, Block 135, Lot 43.03, which property lies in our special economic redevelopment zoning district. It's an application for preliminary and final site plan approval with variances and waivers. You've heard the testimony on the site plan, there are no fault variances being requested except for the variances that I'll set forth. One variance is where it is going to be, it permit, to approve the plan which includes 155 parking spaces, but we're giving them a variance for 127 parking spaces, but they would have the ability to expand that in the event, if they felt the need for, or they could abandon that portion of the site plan that were approved.
And David, we can indicate that only 18 spaces would be adjacent to, Scott, can we go with that block would be? So we can just say with that block. The other one?
This one?
Yeah.
135, 41.02.
All the 18 spaces in.
Future parking would be adjacent to?
Lot 41.02.
Lot 41.02, same block?
And, and the future spaces will allow for parallel parking spaces?
Okay.
Sorry?
Future spaces.
Will allow for parallel parking along the property line.
I'll just email your office to clarify.
But that's, well, that's our understanding, right? We'll, we'll merge them as we go forward.
The other variance will permit the applicant to install a seven-foot chain link type fence along the property line that butts the New Jersey Turner Pike.
If required.
If required. If required. Approval be conditioned upon a guardrail along the applicant's Ninth Avenue frontage per, per the New Jersey DOT and ASHTO, condition that the applicant should apply with the review comments and requirements set forth in Mr. Box's review letter dated May 17, 2023, and will revise the, revise the plans accordingly. Further condition, that the applicant or his successors and interests shall file annually with the Bureau of Stormwater Management. There are several waivers that are set forth in Mr. Box's letter of May 17th, where he has indicated waiver is recommended, you would be voting to, and the applicant is requesting that those waivers be approved. Only the ones that, where Mr. Box has indicated waiver recommended, where he's indicated waiver recommended for completeness only, those will be part of the revision to the plan. All right? That's it.
Thank you, Dave. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Longstein, seconded by Mr. Benauer. Joyce, Paul Paul.
Mr. Aldo.
Yes.
And Mr. Barkan.
Yes.
Mr. Benauer.
Yes.
And Ms. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Kapas.
Yes.
Mr. Longstein.
Yes.
And Ms. Pro.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and guys, your luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Excuse me to jump in to testify, I just wanted to say a few things for you.
Thank you.
I apologize for that.
There's good ideas, Steve, we weren't even thinking about the trees.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Steve, any other things on each end room? The garage, the appropriate.
Yeah, something is.
I don't have a, I don't have a.
I don't know about that, I don't think it's changed, there's a, I think, whether there could.
Do we have teeth on this? Do we have teeth on this? Is this the long one, or how long?
The zoning officer has the ability to issue violations.
He hasn't started to be, okay.
My latest conversation with our zoning officer is allowing for, and this is going back probably for a half week since, because I think he came up with our last meeting, right? So it's putting a correspondence out to the gentleman who's in violation, see if it can be done that way, and then put a date certain, if they don't have, if rectified, then date certain, then violations will be issued. I am not aware of exactly what happens.
Any updates on the Irish mile? Because my understanding, they do not have a TCO, and they still owe them permits.
So.
I'm going to kill him, so.
But you're in the same situation, so they, they started to make inquiries on how to comply with their conditions of approval, not heard anything released in the last.
They're closer, they did the landscaping, they did a lot of that stuff.
They did.
The construction office, it's a construction issue, correct? Work without permits.
It is. They're working without permits, we still have the performance guarantee, so as to the CO, they have not complied with all the conditions of this planning board approval. So they have not done that yet, we have not released, we have not signed off, so formal guarantees.
Can you two send me an email, and I will get our solicitor to, you know, on these things, and get them done, and I'll visit those properties. Please.
Okay. I'll figure, I'll figure what the status is.
I know it was the mayor's job, so I'm going to go knock on people's doors and find out if that's to be done. Seriously, send it to me, I will visit both of you. But I need to know what they need to do to comply. I know the gentleman didn't put his driveway in, but he put the asphalt chips down, and when we gave him permission to put stone down, and he put the rolling stuff down.
I have a letter, that's very easy.
I remember you told him what to do.
I know what to do, and I also have letters on.
And I'll go see, edit the Irish mile.
Still going to have it.
Irish, Irish.
Irish, Irish.
More than something. I don't know.
They have the mile. And then they join themselves, because they work.
Where they smoke by the door, yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public. Steve, no one I make motion to close the public portion?
Oh, second.
Motion made by Mayor Kapas, seconded by Mr. Longstein. Why the motion? For adjournment.
Make that motion.
Second. Motion for adjournment, Mr. Longstein, and seconded by Mr. Benauer. Have a good night, everyone. Have a good night. All right. You have a wonderful day.